I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting of June 10, 2010. Will the minute taker please call the roll?
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes dated May 27, 2010. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a report and recommendation on the ICSC conference report. Mr. Murmas?
Thank you, Alderman Winger. Yeah, there was a typo on the memo. It's actually, we don't need any recommendation. It's just a, an update on the conference per council's request. So, we're just gonna give a brief overview of what we did, and then if there's any questions, we can answer them at that, at that time. Just a side note, this was taken out of the budget for this coming year, so if you guys wanted to add that back in, that would be a discussion for, for a later date. So, we're just gonna talk about the conference itself. This was the city's third year attending the National ICSC Convention. Planning had started almost right after the second year we attended. I believe that you all received a couple of different memos kinda outlining our plan leading up to the actual convention. While at the convention, we were able to successfully implement our plan. We did meet with three different developer groups in one-on-one meetings which were scheduled ahead of time. Those developer groups are listed in the memorandum. It's probably not a, a good idea to talk about the actual names of the firms and how those meetings went in open session like this. So, at this point, I feel more comfortable not talking publicly about that, but they're all listed in there. In addition to the one-on-one meetings, the city was part of the Public Sector Showcase once again. This is our second year being involved in that. We had hoped to have our big display board mailed back to us in time from the conference, but they haven't mailed it back yet. It's in transit right now, so when we get that back, we could, we can put it in the exec session room and show you. But essentially what it is, is it's probably what, like a four-by-three, four-foot by three-foot board, or 34-by-34-foot board, not foot, but inches, that's in a special section of the convention center. And underneath it, it allows us to, you know, showcase our community with some brochures or pamphlets or folders. We've actually got some samples of those tonight that we'll, we'll hand out. I think you, you have all seen those already. There's a limited space in this Public Sector Showcase, so we were able to get in, which is good. Considering the attendance at the conference, you know, we could've reached, you know, upwards of 30,000 contacts by being a part of the Public Sector Showcase, so that is excellent. We've also listed some groups that we stopped by that we did not have one-on-one meetings with. We stopped by these firms. We thought they were a good match for some of the things Wooddale had and what they had to offer, and we dropped off our information at, at their booths. We've also included the commercial contacts that we found, and we included their names on the list as well. At this time, I'm just gonna kinda pass these out for you, so you have another copy, and then if you have any questions, Ross can field them, and I can field them too, so.
Are there any questions? Okay, well, I, I think we have at least one question from Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I will, uh...
Thank you.
I will commend the Jeff and Ross by getting this to a timely matter. It looks like they did have a lot of contacts. Reading this memo, I, I understand you were in contact with this guy for the second time, and I guess he wants to schedule another meeting with you down the line. That's, that's a good sign. I, I'd like to see down the line, I ain't saying that I would not consider putting this back in the budget down the line, see if funding comes available, but I, I really would like you keep us more updated on when these people call back and, and what's the stance of this is. I mean, yeah, this is a nice little, but I wanna know what the ongoing contact is, if it's worth doing it again. But it was a very nice layout that you, you marked at the city quite well in the memo here, so I commend you on that. So, I would still work on that person that contacted you twice already and proceed to get that person in town. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, so, so just to build on that, this is our second meeting, correct, or second conference, or third?
This is our third time out there. It's our second time with a portion displaying the Public Sector Showcase, but it's our third time out there.
So, on the previous time, what was the results?
Uh, it's, it's really kind of a, it builds each time we go out there. The first time is more kinda getting your feet wet, really don't know what to expect. The second time is starting to get into some one-on-one meetings. The third time, we had more intensified one-on-one meetings, you know, we followed up for the second time with a developer who still wants to talk to us more, who's relatively, you know, interested in what we have to offer. You know, it's just, the more times you go out there and the more people you talk to, the, the greater likelihood that eventually something would, you know, happen.
It, it also gives us the, the tools, or to go to, to Manager Douthwait's analogy of fishing, it gives us, tells us what lures to put in our tackle box for future discussions with these developers. Based off of what we've learned over these past few years, and especially this year, we're gonna be coming forward with some suggestions and some, some ideas through the Thorndale Corridor Plan, the implementation schedule, that we believe will be the lures we need to, to keep these developers interested and, and moving forward in the process.
Okay, so is this, would you say so far the best response, you know, from last year to this year comparing it?
Each, each year we've gone, it's, it's, like I said, it's intensified where, you know, perhaps if we were to go again, we've got, you know, we're further along with the plan. As Ross noted with, you know, the financial incentives that we may talk about in the upcoming report, you know, that may be what we need to get it done. I, I don't know. It's nothing for sure, but each time we've been out there, it's, you know, it gets a little bit more intense each time.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Coles?
I believe you should go anytime that it's, it runs, because the more you're out there throwing the name of Wooddale out there, the more you got a chance of setting up the Lakota project. And if IDOT comes through with whatever they say, you can always wish that IDOT has plans for this highway going through, and this is something that they should do. And I think you, you didn't waste one dime with all this stuff.
Alderman Coles, Alderman Coles, I need to interrupt you at this point for a little announcement. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Joe. Happy birthday to you.
Am I supposed to blow that out? I still got strength. At the age of eighty.
That's why I didn't put all those candles on, I was running out of breath.
I wanna adjourn the meeting for cake, and then we'll circle back.
And for the record, this is Alderman Coles' 80th birthday tonight. Congratulations.
Yay. I'm reconvening the Finance and Administration Committee meeting of June 10, 2010. Will the minute taker please reflect? Same members are present, and I'll let Alderman Coles continue on what he was saying.
Oh, I remember. Why, you think I can't? All right. I was talking about sending them back down there next year, and the year after. The more they're there, the more the people that are on these lists that we have in front of us get to recognize that Wooddale is on the map, and we have some representatives there. It will help us build up our, our reputation as a leading, small leading town in the state of Illinois and in DuPage County. And that's what we need in case, if everything goes right, we'll need all of these little towns, all of these companies. Not only the companies in Illinois, but the companies outside of Illinois, which will probably come in and help us build our corridor for us. That's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this item? Okay, that'll conclude. It actually says report and recommendation. Are you looking for something specific on this one? Okay, so I'll revise it to a report. Thank you for the report. And next item is item number five, report and recommendation in ordinance authorizing the dissolution of Nordcat. Mr. Murmas?
Mayor, do you want me to do this, or you wanna take it?
Nordcat, which I've served on since I've been mayor, is an organization, the communities are wrong, by the way, Carol Stream is a member, not Addison. It's an association of communities which licensed Comcast in the five communities, and then we charged a franchise fee for that license. However, about a year ago, the state of Illinois and the legislature took that authority away from us, and there is now a statewide permit, rather than the local communities giving licenses to the cable vision people. So, this organization is obsolete and has no function anymore. The money that was connected, collected as the franchise fee now will come directly to Wooddale, not through Nordcat, so.
So, if a citizen has a complaint on their service, and, and they've contacted their cable company, and they're not pleased with that, who would they call in that case, rather than make a Nordcat record, or how, how does that work?
It's the state of Illinois, and I believe the attorney, I'm not positive, but I believe it's the Attorney General's office, Lee Madigan's office.
Okay, so there may be some refining on that, but, like a process worked out. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, then, I make a motion to approve the recommendation on an ordinance authorizing the dissolution of Nordcat. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, commuter parking fee. And actually, in that, Mr. Murmas, I'm not sure, do we have any reverse commute lots? And it, and if we don't, can we add that into the discussion?
Actually, I think that was something Mr. Clicker is working on right now, that program, so we can, we can talk about that in the future, yeah. Actually, I think Chief Benowat's around, didn't he, wasn't he?
ITC has like four or eight, and I believe it's working pretty well for them, and it does allow for the reverse commute, which is nice.
Yeah, we've had a recent run, if you, if you will, on reverse commuters calling in, trying to see how we handle it. Previously, we'd kinda handle on a case-by-case basis by the police department, but since it's becoming more and more prevalent, we're actually, through the police department and our parking meter company, TPS, setting up a few spots, I guess they call it the finger that kind of extends out to the east off of the main lot there. They're gonna be designated for reverse commuters, and those spaces are gonna be set up so you can pay multiple days at a time, 'cause the ticket expires at 12:00 PM. So, if you're there, you know, from, you know, 5:00 o'clock at night until 10:00 the next morning, there is the chance of getting a ticket, even though you still haven't shown up yet to get your car to go to work. So, there are spots, they're setting up spots to accommodate for the multi-day parking, you know, the overnight parking, and things of that nature. That's currently in the works through the police department and TPS, who does our parking machines. So, that is something that we are looking into, and getting taken care of as quickly as we can, while still maintaining the integrity of the program, so.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Okay, so that would be the item A, as well as a commuter parking fee, and then item B, utility bill rate reduction targeted for June 24th. Are there any other items that I requested? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I just wanna ask the mayor. Mayor, on this meeting that you had with Bensville and Elk Grove and that, and the O'Hare deal, is that still part of SOC, or is that, is that a different organization, now we call that? I know you said we were gonna revise or energize SOC back up. Is that still in there, or no?
Yeah, SOC now has evolved into not only noise monitoring of O'Hare, but more importantly, we're now talking about economic development along the Thorndale Corridor, and we're also talking about increased flood control efforts, and that's all under the auspices of SOC. I can give you a brief update, since you're bringing up the subject. Elk Grove has floated a study to the cost of $30,000 about expanding the Bussie Woods Reservoir, this idea of lowering the reservoir in advance of a flood event, and then allowing the flood waters to be stored up there, rather than just spilling over the weir the way it is now. And down the road, the consortium may pick up the cost. The full study's gonna be about 200,000, but the original 30,000's being fronted by Elk Grove. So, that's a major issue we're dealing with, and we're trying to coordinate, like I said, the western corridor and the economic development that will come.
Can I just ask one other question? We could discuss it in the future meeting. What happened to all that money it was with SOC?
Uh, SOC is broke. Well, no, excuse me, I shouldn't, no, let me rephrase that. SOC does have a cash balance of about $220,000, which is dedicated money from the state of Illinois specifically for noise monitoring the airport. And so, we are keeping that money in case we do wanna do independent monitors to verify the ONCC monitors. We have recently gotten rid of all the vans that we used to have like 10 years ago. So, there's no dues being assessed to any member. There's about 10,000 in the general checking account, which we're using to pay secretarial services, sending out the agendas, that kind of stuff. And the money that is there cannot be dispersed to the communities, it could only be redispersed back to the state of Illinois.
And it's more for watchdog use?
Specifically for sound monitoring of the airport.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley?
So, we're gonna be talking about this later on, about SOC?
Not on this committee.
Hey, okay. Who goes to those meetings, Mayor? I'm sorry.
I go to those meetings, and Mr. Douthwait goes to the meeting, and Mr. Bond goes as the attorney for SOC and representing the village of Bensonville.
Do we get quarterly reports on those?
I think we could put that in the packet.
So, just to clarify, like, if there were funds being requested, I would agree that it should be on Finance and Administration, but if we're talking about the mission of SAC, then, then there'll be like public health and safety. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
But I believe down the line with his statement just now, that there may be, they may be requesting funding for that study. So, I would recommend that we have a discussion on that in the near future here under Finance, because they may ask for money for funding that reservoir expansion. So, I, I strongly suggest we have a discussion on it in the Finance.
Okay, but, but to talk about what?
How much money they may be asking for down the line here.
So, is it to ask for a request for money, or is it to ask for whether or not we agree with their mission?
Why don't we wait until the report is issued by Elk Grove? I'll be glad to share it with the committee, whichever is appropriate, either Public Works or Finance, and if there's a request, it may be come back that this is not a feasible project, that the Friends of Forest Preserve may actively oppose it, and it may be dropped very quickly.
So, if they're coming back and they're asking for money, then bring the whole thing to Finance and Administration, and we'll discuss both at the same time, if that's what they're looking at doing. But I wasn't even aware that, you know, it was restarting, so it's all news to me.
It's been meeting for probably, well, since Mayor Soto got elected.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley?
I just asked if we could have a quarterly report. After we see these quarterly reports, we could add them to agendas as we see fit, finance, public health and safety, and go from there, because we'll be advanced.
And I might add, if you're interested, we meet the third Tuesday of every month. We rotate among the various communities. I think the next meeting is in Addison next month, at 1:00.
Any other items? Okay, I, I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll call the Public Works meeting order. Make the minute, take a note that same people are present. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Approve the minutes, May 27, 2010. I have a motion, I have a second. Changes, corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on agenda, report recommendation, Oak and Potter Water Main Change Order Number One, Revell Construction, construction in amount of $13,857.95. John, or Dave, you taking this? I believe this was a water main that, after they started working on it, there was more damage done to it than that.
Right, all, all three of these items were unknown or unforeseen field conditions that they encountered when they started digging. The first item is when they excavated to make the tap onto the existing main. They found an adjacent T and valve next to it were leaking, so we had them replace that. The second item was, for some reason, a lot had two water services. Only one of them had a B-box on it and was marked, so no one knew the other one was there, and then that got hit and caused a rupture of the main that had to be repaired. The third item was excavation onto Oak, where they ran into a catch basin filled with concrete. Someone had just buried under there years ago, and that interfered with the work, and had a streetlight cable running through it that had to be taken out and rerouted, and that's the last item. So, the total on those three items is the $13,857.95.
So, that is a change order for $13,857.95. Change order number one. Dave, is this, have we paid any of these bills yet at all on this project?
We've, not for the change order, we've paid...
No, but have we paid anything?
Yes, we paid one pay request already.
And how much was that?
Second one on the agenda tonight.
I'm sorry.
Well, I can, we paid, we've paid 171,573.30 so far.
Okay. I have no problem with, for this change order, so that will be my motion to approve a change order, $13,857.95. If I have a second.
Second.
Questions? New York Police?
Yeah, I got a question, Dave. On this unknown, unmarked live water service, if it was unknown and unmarked, were we giving away free water there, or what's the deal?
No, it wasn't running into the house, it was just terminated in the parkway.
Okay.
It was a tap off the main and a copper line that just stopped.
Okay.
You know, for, for what, you know, stubbed for whatever reason.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor? Joe, you have your hand up for that, or?
No, I, I was just gonna say that, this happens whenever you're taking old water main apart, you don't know what you're gonna find. You don't know what you're gonna find.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on agenda, report and recommendation, recommendation to Addison, rural water main change in the scope of project, a contract awarded to RJN Group, an amount not to exceed $47,950.00 for design service. I believe this is a water main that we are, it's in a budget to be replaced on Addison Road. Am I pretty much right on that?
Correct. Now, that, what's in the CIP now is the water main between Carter and Forest Preserve. And when we looked at this, and when we sat down with RJN and did the scoping of the project, we realized there were some unique situations out there. There's an area where there's two parallel water mains, one on each side of Addison Road, and we do have an opportunity of getting rid of those two and replacing them with one, and saving us about 1,000 feet of water main that we won't have to maintain anymore. The other thing we've discovered is that there's a discontinuity in the loop, in that there's a 12-inch main south of there, approximately 1,000 feet, another 12-inch main north of there, approximately 1,000 feet, but this 6-inch main connects the two of them. So, if we replace all of that with a 12-inch main, we can have a continuous 12-inch loop on that whole system. And I realize we're, we're increasing the cost quite a bit over what's in the CIP. The CIP is $200,000. The estimate for this work is 600,000, and we don't have to do this, but it just really looks like the right way to go, so I wanted to present this. It doesn't have to be done this year. If we wanna, you know, span it over to next year, we can do it for financial reasons, but, you know, we, we do have money available if we choose to go this route, and again, it would help us, you know, make some major improvements on our water system.
Where, where would you take this money out of, to increase?
It would come out of the Water and Sewer Fund.
New York Police?
Dave, if I'm not mistaken, I think we have basically every year 20,200, 220,000 in the budget for the next five years for the CIP, right? Is that correct?
For water main replacements?
Right.
We, we have different water main jobs every year. The costs vary, but, yeah, we do water main, we usually do a couple of water main.
Basically the same amount in the CIP every year for five years, if I recall correctly.
I, I know...
Brad's looking it up.
Brad's looking that up. I don't know if it's the same amount. I mean, we usually just go by whatever sections of main are in most need of repair, and, and, you know, the costs can vary on that. I know Oak and Potter, it was in the vicinity of 500,000, so that's, it's more than the 200.
How many feet was that?
Uh, that was, um, I think about 2,000.
Because the thing is, we have the money in the, we have money in that CIP.
Yeah, but, I understand your, your point on that, but the problem is, I have no problem going with this, the only thing is, I don't wanna cut any other water main projects that are on the books and go forward, and taking from that water main project to pay for this water main project.
But if we have a chance to correct something that was messed up years ago, shouldn't we fix it?
Well, that's our thing. I mean, even if, again, even if we don't do it immediately, even if we had to delay it a year, I guess my preference would be to do that and do it right, than to do more of a Band-Aid approach, and then come back later and do more of it.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, actually, I think I'm gonna take it on a slightly different subject, if you wanna answer this question first.
New York had a question, so Brad, you got the answer first?
Yeah, in addition to the Addison Road water main replacement this year, there's a short section of Hemlock scheduled in this year's CIP, a short section of Edgewood, which those three projects together total about $340,000.
But the Edgewood...
Before this change order, that's just as presented.
Okay, but the Edgewood project is out, part of Elmhurst Rural Construction Project, am I right?
No, this is, this is Edg, this is Edgewood between Irving Park and the, or Irving Park and the railroad tracks, so it's a different section. And I, and I would throw out also, if we wanted to, those sections, Hemlock and Edgewood are smaller dead-end mains, if we wanted to maybe delay those until next year and use that money on this, you know, I would recommend doing that, again, just in the interest of kinda fixing this bigger problem, but I understand that going from 200,000 to 600,000 is a, it's a big increase.
Can I follow up?
Go ahead.
Brad, but that's for this year's projects. What about the following year? We have, again, correct? We got projects every year for...
Correct. In fiscal year 2012, programmed is 2,300 feet on Edgebrook for water main replacement, currently cost estimated 450,000. It appears to be the only one for fiscal 12. And in fiscal 13, there's Central Road for 1,000 feet, and Oakwood for just under 2,300 feet for 450,000 dollars. So, the next three years, there are some cost out already. You know, one thing interesting on, on the Oakwood, depending on when, you know, if and when the council decides to do that Forest Street section there, that could, there could be some synergies and cost between this project and that overall project. So, while this is the cost estimate, it, it could be absorbed into the, was it 3.2 million dollar project?
Be a road project.
Yeah, the roadway project. But there, there are different things spelled out each of the next three years, for sure. And looking at the pro forma cash flows in the front, in the short term, you could take it out of the, the fund balance of the Water and Sewer Fund and the Water and Sewer Capital Fund to do this project, to kinda write, write that loop on, on the west part, the west side of town there. So, there is the, the cash available to do it, if you wanna, if you wanna do it at this time.
Without stopping any other water main projects that are going forward?
Correct.
The only point is, I don't wanna stop any water main project, because that one on Hemlock needs to be replaced. We had several water main breaks there. These water mains that are in the CIP is that we have ahead several major breaks. Down the line here, guys, we really gonna have to start looking at every...
Down the line here, guys, we really gonna have to start looking at every park road here. We have had five water main breaks on that stretch within two years now. It needs to be addressed, and that's going to be ballpark figure, five mil?
I don't know if we ballparked it, but, yeah, you know, significant project, major project.
So, I mean, I just don't want to stop any road projects.
Mayor Johnson?
Before we jump to spending an extra $400,000, is there an engineering reason why 12, 6, 12 is wrong? Because for the last 20 years, I don't remember anybody ever saying that we don't have enough water pressure up and down on Addison.
We're not doing this based on any complaints of lack of pressure, but again, when we see an opportunity to improve this, I mean, 6 inches is really not considered adequate. It's not considered adequate for fire flows. Any new developments, new subdivisions, always go with 8. You know, so 8 is usually adequate, but if you have a 12-inch on either end, you know, you tend to go for that. Again, I've never heard of any complaints of water pressure problems, and maybe John can weigh in on that, but, you know, usually your fire flows are more of your critical link on that than just, say, your domestic services. But I'm not aware of any pressure deficiencies, but again, we just see this opportunity exist.
What I'm getting at, is there any reason why it has to be 12, 12, 12, the three segments?
No, we haven't studied it and found that there's any deficiency in the system that we would have to cur...